It'll be recorded and be on live on YouTube.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready whenever you want to start.
Good morning. Welcome to our public hearing for our Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. My name is Rashonda Alexander. I serve as Director of Compliance for the Community Development Administration. And we have our other team members here with us that have been working on our CDBG DR. And I will allow them to introduce themselves, members from the city of St. Louis, and also our esteemed consultants from ICF. Lisa?
Good morning.
Want to protect the room out here too.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lisa Jones. I am Program Manager for the CDBG DR grant.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Russell and the Commissioner of Emergency Management for the City of St. Louis.
And virtually, we have our team of consultants from ICF. So Chris, would you like to? Good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Chris Narducci. I'm a Senior Manager at ICF, and I am supporting our work with the City of St. Louis designing the action plan and implementing programs. Thank you.
All right, well, we will get started here. I'll share my screen. So jumping right into it. Or not. The purpose of today's hearing is for us to go over our CDBG activities that are proposed to HUD for in response to the flood of 2022 in the city of St. Louis. We will discuss our disaster impacts and our risk index, the unmet needs analysis, our proposed activities and the action plan timeline, and any opportunities for discussion and comment by citizens. So CDA is the Community Development Administration. We serve as the clearinghouse for all federal funds. We're working to implement the mayor's economic justice agenda by funding a wide range of activities from neighborhood transformation to affordable housing throughout the city of St. Louis led by our CDA Citizen Participation Plan. We kind of went over the purpose today, but just to highlight again, we want you to feel free to ask questions to kind of understand what unmet needs are. Please give us your comments because we are still within the public comment period for the the action plan as it relates to CDBGDR, and then we will respond to you with a draft action plan describing the mitigation activities of which we're going to use this money to fund those activities. So what are CDBGDR funds? CDBGDR funds are funds issued by Congress and they're appropriated through this means. They're used for household relief, economic revitalization, some infrastructure mitigation and housing needs. Unmet needs tied to the disaster are those that FEMA wouldn't have responded to or the SBA or any other federal source during the flood, and you still have some things that remain unresolved. And this is what we use the CDBGDR funds for. Those things that FEMA didn't cover or another federal service didn't cover. So when we keep mentioning unmet needs, that is what it means in a nutshell. Who is eligible to receive the funding? The funds are awarded to state and local government agencies. So that's why it came to CDA, because we are a local government agency. And then we allocate those funds to programs, and the programs of which we'll be discussing here today. And then each program then allocates to city agencies or to nonprofits and directly to citizens and then their businesses or other agencies. So it kind of goes like through a through a pipeline. With all of CDBG funds, they must meet a national objective. And national objectives are they benefit low to moderate income people as prescribed by the federal government. They are to prevent slumming blight, and then they meet any urgent needs. It also must address a direct or indirect impact from the disaster. So say your roof was bad before the disaster, and if we can't connect it to the flood, that is not an eligible use, okay? And the last is it must be located in an impact or distressed area. So if you lived in Tennessee, you can't come and get CDBGDR money for the city of St. Louis. Okay, this is a good point. Like, I always like to read the asterisks because if you see on the slide, it says the HUD requires grantees to allocate 15% of DR grants for mitigation. And mitigation are those activities that help to prevent future disasters from happening. What we've been experiencing here, and we've heard a lot, is we've been getting a hundred-year disaster like every 20 years or so. So now that we know that we have some issues, we want to try to mitigate them. We want to prevent them from happening. So they say take 15% of this grant and set it aside to kind of fix it so it doesn't continue to affect residents in the same area over and over. These are the proposed eligible activities. We're proposing a home repair program, a home buyout program, flood response reserve, some household relief, a green infrastructure program, and then, of course, that mitigation we talked about. In detail, we'll go in a little bit later, but first let's talk about where where it happened. So HUD basically says that for it to be considered a disaster or a mid-area, which is 80% of impacted and distressed area, you can be considered a CDBGDR candidate. For us, the entire city of St. Louis was considered a mid-area. So funds can be used, 100% of CDBG funds can be used within the city. Once again, HUD has designated the entire independent city of St. Louis as a mid-area, and the city will spend 100% of CDBGDR funds within the city of St. Louis. And this is identified here by the map. Our next one, we're really going to zoom kind of into the the cause to the United Way. So when the flood happened, you see these red and blue dots. A lot of United Way 211 systems were concentrated in North St. Louis. And this map shows the households that were requesting help surrounding the the flood July 27th of 2022 through August 4th of 2022. We also see some impacted areas south and just scattered throughout the city of St. Louis. With our unmet needs analysis, our team had been going out for for months, for for years now. I mean, if you would talk to Sarah, she would be able to give you extensive, and we will toss it to Sarah to talk about more of the unmet need that that she's experienced. But it's a part of what is required. So we were going to neighborhood meetings in, like, Ellendale. We went to, we had a public committee. Well, it's like, basically, we had a public event at WOOL to talk with some citizens about their unmet needs. And the information collected through this recovery and assessment served as our foundation for the programs that we proposed. This is what we found, and this data was led by ICF. So thank you so much for putting it into this format for us. If we look at two populations, our citizens that own homes and those that don't. So we have over almost 2,500 citizens who own homes. The majority of their damage was less than five grand, right? But we have some homeowners who have more than $38,000 of damage to their house, right? And so it's it's not a one-size-fits-all. So we're trying to frame programs to get as much of impact for all of the range of our our citizens. Our renters, over 1,700 renters experienced damage. We have some, the majority of which were under $1,000 of damage for renters. But we see here that there were renters, a renter that responded. Let's keep in mind, these are people who responded. One of these responded people that rent homes had over $8,000 in damage. With our housing unmet need, we talked about some other federal sources that came in to help, like FEMA and like the SBA. But in St. Louis, the housing need identified was over $42 million. FEMA assisted 9.7 roughly, SBA close to 11 for a total of of 20 million, but that's still over 21 million left of unmet need calculations, which is why CDBGDR funds are required and needed in our city. Even though the flood happened in '22, we still know that people need the help in '24. Outside of our citizens who their homes and renters were impacted, our infrastructure was severely impacted, our public buildings, and also our recreation and and other facilities. The city, our department building located at 1900 Hampton, just north of Interstate 44, was one that was impacted, and that cost is exceeding $5 million. We also know that the flood impacted small businesses. So we have 475 here that were reported to have been impacted. The value of their loss is over $19 million. They got loans to help support them, right? Over 3 million, but it's still 15, over $15 million of unmet need. And part of our discovery, we've been doing a lot of surveys. And the survey is still active on the city's website. Should you want to spread the information out to some more people that you know were affected, but they didn't get a chance to give us some information, now is still the time because we're in the public comment period and we want to hear from you. And we want to prioritize the most critical unmet need. So right now, based on the surveys and the people that have responded, those most critical are the implementation of new infrastructure to prevent future damage. That's at 39%. Our second one is repairs to my home. That's 36%. And then we have two that are kind of, you know, tied, and that's the restoration to neighborhood infrastructure and then access to new housing that doesn't have a flood risk. So just keep in mind, right now, the the two that are in the lead based on the survey results. For our mitigation-only activities, the regional, the St. Louis Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan identified hazards that propose the greatest risk and the highest probability and impact natural hazards are listed. Tornado, we know about the flood because that's why we're here today, but also extreme heat, some bad thunderstorms, and then in the winter where we get severe weather. This is just a map because we like to have maps that kind of outline and and give a visual. But our high hazard floodplains are located throughout the city and then run through some very densely populated areas. So that's a big problem because flooding where we have a lot of people. Also, in the areas where we do have a lot of people, these are some of our most vulnerable populations that have been affected. We have a moderate to high social vulnerability, according to the U.S. Census, in these areas that are the darker blues. So let's go through our proposed activities in detail. We have proposed with this total of $25,834,000 to split the grant up across these categories. Housing has a 23% allocation, close to 6 million for the home repair program. Housing for the home buyout, about 5.4 million. With our flood response reserve, we are proposing an allocation of 1.3. Household Relief Subsistence Program, 638,000 for infrastructure, 9.8. Planning, 1.4, and administration, 1.2. This makes up 100% of the way we are proposing to HUD to allocate this $25.8 million in CDBGDR grant funds. The homeowner repair program, we're setting or seeking a maximum limit of award to $50,000 per per applicant. We saw on the previous slide, it was like 38,000 was for homeowners that had unmet need. So we're exceeding that with a maximum award of 50,000. We have proposed to benefit the entire area of the city of St. Louis that we know was impacted, and the beneficiaries will be low, moderate income individuals. With our buyout program, it's the same, but the budget is different. We are proposing a buyout incentive program to allow for the acquisition of properties in a floodway, a floodplain, or other defined disaster risk reduction area. Now, this is very key. The buyout properties will be voluntary, okay? And so they won't be forced. You nominate yourself, and if we can, we will do our best to to buy your property out. And then it will be sold to CDA or or designate me at a pre-disaster fair market value, and it must be converted to and maintained as a green open space, a recreational or wetland management or other allowable, key word, disaster risk reduction practice. I skipped flood response reserve. That wasn't on purpose. So I'm just backing up to show that we have proposed an allocation of 1.3 for our flood response reserve. And this is to maintain in perpetuity some emergency response tools. Sarah, do you mind just speaking a little bit to what you saw during this time where people, we didn't have access to some things?
Sure. So some immediate things, of course, that we think of with flooding is are things like sandbags as well as, you know, other resources to help keep water out of your home or business and immediately following once, you know, we do have flooding inside of a home or business, things like pumping and cleaning really become important because we know that especially for residential areas where we're concerned with people who are trying to get back into their home, that they need to be able to do so safely without mold starting to grow and and other types of issues which are bad for the average citizen, but but exponentially worse for those with pre-existing conditions such as asthma or other breathing medical issues. So those are kind of the high level as far as residents or businesses would be concerned. And then we do also have some of those similar concerns, of course, with our city facilities that we talked about having impacts as well to city facilities and equipment.
Thank you. So with this response reserve, the city will have supplies ready. Not that we have to get just a reserve on hand for a future disaster. Household Relief Subsistence Program, we are requesting emergency payments be made on behalf of individuals and families for the purpose of preventing homelessness. And the program will make a one-time payment to beneficiaries specifically for some car buyouts as well. We saw on the news all of the cars that were underwater, and we want to meet that need for some people who still do not have a car, right? This one is going to be a heavier lift to be very open with you. And we're requesting a waiver from HUD because right now it's not something that is deemed eligible for a car buyout program, but it's something that we've heard in the city of St. Louis from our citizens. So we're just going to go forward and try and request a waiver to get this program rolled out for you and allocating 638,000 to it. And our green infrastructure program, this one is informed in part by a regional study. So we know that the flood just didn't affect St. Louis City. It also affected St. Louis County. And so we have a regional flood mitigation and green infrastructure plan and a river repair feasibility and design study that we would like to conduct to construct floodwater control measures. And this is a way to get some rain gardens, some catchment basins, some permeable alleys, and really help mitigation measures, but also curtailing, trying to curtail future exhaustive damage from the flood like we experienced before. So that's why $9.8 million is proposed for this green infrastructure program. And last but not least, our flood recovery and mitigation program, where the budget is 1.4 million, we are asking and allocating that we use these funds for unmet need and mitigation analysis, the response reserve distribution plan, the river repair feasibility design study, and then the regional and flood mitigation infrastructure plan. So when is this all going to happen? I know the flood happened in like 2022. Here we are talking about in 2024. We had to wait on Congress to give us the funds, and it's it's been slow, but we are here. And we expect these programs to launch in early 2025. So that's the short answer. Right now, we're going through what is compliant and required by HUD. We have drafted our action plan. It's posted on the website. We are conducting public hearings, which this is one of them. And we plan to have the finalized action plan. This is this is what we're going to do. This is how much we are allocating by August the 24th. We hope that HUD says, all right, here you are by October 24th, and we start rolling it out as early as 2025. Of course, we will try to do anything sooner if we can, but this is the timeline. With that, let's let's talk. We, Tom has really made sure that our website stays up to date and current regarding CDBGDR. And I know we have some community members here. Anybody like to weigh in or share your personal story or give us some feedback on what we could do better? Okay.
I live on Hermitage. Sarah knows that.
Okay.
So I'm kind of representing our street. I live pretty hard. And I just wonder about if people who already fixed up their houses but gone into debt doing so would be eligible to get any of this money.
That's a good question.
We, yeah, I've gone into debt doing it. I've taken all my money out of my retirement plan. We lost both our cars. I lost a garage. And another comment that was raised by somebody on our street was, you know, some people pull permits, some people don't pull permits. And she kind of thought that people that pulled permits and did it the right way should be compensated maybe first because we ended up spending more money because we had to do it the right way. Now, I don't know if that's anything, you know, that's an iffy situation, but it was a comment that was brought up on our street. And my neighbor was in the paper today.
About CDBGDR?
The 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 thing that was in the Post Dispatch today about the thing, Ernie Carr, you know, Ernie. He was a picture in the paper today, and he lives two doors down from me. He's been in the news a lot about the flood and stuff. He's been vocal about it. But it's just some concerns that all of us that have spent money and now have car payments. Yeah, we got insurance money for our cars, but it didn't, of course, cover buying another car. And none of us bought new cars. So now we all have car payments, and I had to build a new garage. And of course, that costs way more than what I I had flood insurance, and I got money from flood. Some people got money from flood and FEMA. I got rejected by FEMA because I got money from flood, but it wasn't nearly enough to. And I went back and forth between the two of them multiple times, and it wasn't nearly enough to cover anything. So I just, the main question, I guess, would be if you've already spent the money for repairs and gone into debt over it, will you be able to get any of this money?
So the shot answer is it appears that you have an unmet need. And because of that, I believe that you can be eligible to apply this CR funds.
Yeah.
And you'll go on there.
I mean, I can show bills way exceeding what my receipts are for what we've done. Yes. I mean, our bill is way over what the money I got for what we've done.
In your case, you want to make sure that there are, one, thank you for where we are. And it's been a very long, yeah.
Two, we have what's considered duplication of benefits. So you shared that you received some money from flood. So we would, we are not allowed to pay for the same thing again. So with all your receipts, I would, now that you've had this one-on-one, I would go and highlight, this is what went to this, and this is what still remains, you know? That way, you show there's no duplication of benefits, city of St. Louis. My name is me, and I have an unmet need, you know? And, yeah, but please still apply. Yeah, and thank you for coming. I'm I'm so happy you're here today because it's usually just us. Yeah. Yeah, it's it's really important because that's not something that we talk about in our silo, and it's now something that can be brought to the table because you are here saying it. So thank you.
Rashonda, I know that there is another question that that I've received from someone in the community that has to do with, again, they have savings that that they've put aside to do renovations on their home before, during, and after the flood. But now the other thing that they're considering because of where they are in the floodplain is the expense of potentially raising up their home. And I I don't know that that's been fully discussed or if that would be part of something that would be eligible according to the HUD guidelines. But I know that that is a question that does exist in the community as well.
Yeah, it is eligible where people have raised a home. I would really love if our ICF experts could chime in about other cities that maybe experienced a flood disaster and what you know that they've done as far as raising the home and wrapping that in into maybe one of our proposed programs.
Hi, this is Chris Narducci with ICF. You're correct. That's an eligible activity. You know, other grantees that we've worked with, they have incorporated elevation into home repair programs. In some cases, they have home repair and mitigation programs where that's an eligible sort of rehabilitation that's done to houses. Obviously, it's expensive. It's a whole different calculation of, you know, how much money you want to put into a program. So that would be a decision that St. Louis can make about whether or not you want to make that part of your program or create a separate program, you know, home mitigation, home elevation program. You know, there's different ways of doing it, but it it's definitely eligible, and that could be a consideration as you revise your action plan.
Thank you, Chris, for chiming in.
Sure.
I don't see, there's no questions in the chat.
I don't see, there's no questions in the chat as of now. I do see that there are in the attendees, some members of St. Louis media, any reporters of any questions at all, and just feel free to, you can put them in the chat, or we can bring you in live. This is a open forum, so feel free to ask any questions. We also have some CDA staff in the room. Many, many are new and welcome. And do CDA staff have any questions about this program as we all ramp up? We're all going to be working on this together in the next couple of years. Any CDA staff, any questions? Yes, front row.
It regards to outside being the CDA staff. We are members of the community that were impacted by this flood too. Does this program eliminate city of St. Louis employees who are being partake in the program? Yeah, I'm curious. I don't know if the discussed that. I do know that
Normally, we are not allowed to be the beneficiaries of some of the programs that we roll out. I'm wondering if other cities have allowed some of their their employees of the actual, the administering bodies to to receive funds. You all know, have you heard of that before?
That's a good question. I haven't come across that. Something I think we'd need to take a look into, you know, ask some of our colleagues and maybe look at, look at different conflict policies. I I haven't come across that, and and I don't know the answer on the top of my head.
Yeah, I think I would not expect it. And I will be pleasantly surprised if, you know, and and feel very favorite if it were something that as an employee of CDA and a victim of the flood, that you could receive it, that would be great. But I I would not anticipate it. But let's hope, you know, because you're you're citizen first, you know?
Citizen first.
You also have to be income eligible. This is for LMI population, so great point.
F Y two are fully or gaining only by the income guidelines that outline for F Y two or more about the F Y four guidelines.
I would like that just one little thing. I want to compliment the city of St. Louis. And I get choked up because they did such a good job providing dumpsters. We had dumpsters, we didn't have piles of trash like we saw in the county. We had dumpsters and room to multiple times a day. They had a command center set up with food and water and fans and stuff, and the city did a great job for us.
I don't want to really give a lot of
Over to Sarah and Seema because you were working like nine around the clock, nonstop.
And they sent her to our house to help clean up. I mean, we had everything, it was so helpful.
Yeah, we did, we had a lot of really good partners that were able to assist us in in all parts of the city. We had command post in four different neighborhoods. And a lot of goods were were provided by volunteers as well.
We're actually friends with some of the volunteers at our house now still.
Yeah, and and in particular, I told different neighbors in different parts of the city, like, you're going to get sick of me. But but that's what we do. That's, you know, our time to kind of be on the ground to make sure that those those needs immediately are being met and and coordinating our our city department partners as well as our community partners and people that came in from outside of the community and just wanted to donate goods.
To our house and help. It was wonderful.
Let's end on that note. You know, if there are not any more questions or comments, we do have another slide, but it's basically just saying, this is how you comment, which will take us to the website and our email, and it has our address. Feel free to share it if you do have any public comments. We're still in that period of time. And this is our email, You can also find us using your phone. Thank you, Tommy, for always updating our website. And thank you to everyone that's put together this presentation and worked so hard on this program. The city will be holding another virtual public hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth. It will be via Zoom, so it will only be virtual this time from six to seven. And our recording will remain on CDA's website for those who are unable to make this one that was in person, and then our one that will be virtual on the twenty-fifth. We thank you, and we're still working for you.